All right, good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, the time is 2:34. And this is going to be a board workshop to include discussion of. By the way, any objections from any of the other board members if we take item C first? No objections? All right, staff, can we use the A here first?
F C.
F C.
So, real quick before we get started, I know that there were several policies that were under review. And based on feedback from the board, we determined that we would have a board workshop so that we could take some of the feedback that you shared with us about F C local. And then propose to you some work that we've been doing on the other two policies, C H and D E C. So that we could continue to get some additional feedback from you. All three policies, based on today's workshop, will come back to you for approval at the April 18 board meeting if all of them are ready, you know, based on your feedback today. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Macias, who's gonna lead us in the policy discussion associated with F C local. You all gave us extensive feedback about that at the last board meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Avella, vice president, call members of the board. I'm here to, with you today, just to share with you the feedback that I received and how I was able to, along with my team, create F C local and F C regulation. If you look at F C local, initially, it was one document that included all the details on school attendance areas. Based on your feedback, what we did is, we redesigned F C local to where it has the decision principles within F C local. And any administrative procedures were transitioned to F C regulation. So all information is there, however, it was divided based on the feedback. So if you look at F C local, it has the definition of attendance zones and the criteria where our board will be approving all attendance zones that come forward. And that is something, a decision factor for the board. Annual enrollment analysis is a report that will be provided to the board on a yearly basis. We felt that it was important that that was in local policy, to where that was a standing item that would occur every year. And then the last item, approved attendance zone implementation provisions. This is very helpful for especially parents. If an attendance zone is approved, when is it that is it, when is it implemented? And it also guides administration, the implementation pieces. Is it gonna be this year, it'll be next year? What about new students? So the approved attendance zone implementation provisions actually outlines the implementation plan for any zones that you all approved and when they're being implemented. On F C regulation, what we did is, all administrative protocols for school attendance areas were transitioned into the regulation piece of it. The feedback that I received from the last meeting was that the attendance zone advisory committee was too large. And the other piece that I took is that it would, the standards that were used previously for the attendance redistricting, which is very different, that you all would like us to follow something similar. So recommendation, since we do have two feeder pa, or ten feeder patterns by high school, that every board member would appoint two committee members. And the superintendent would appoint also two, which would be a total of sixteen district stakeholders for the attendance zone advisory committee. And those would be by appointment. And with that, collectively, we would request that, if possible, each high school feeder pattern would be represented. That way, it would be that collective decision of the committee to have, so that everybody has a voice within every area that is identified for possible attendance zone or read adjustments. And then the other items, just as presented before, are the same decision principles. Those were the only items that I adjusted based on the feedback. And at this point, I would like continued feedback as I adjust it for approval for next week at the regular board meeting.
So basically, just in a nutshell, you moved the provisions associated with committee developments and decision principles to regulation rather than keep them in policy?
Correct. Administrative protocols in regulation, any decision principles for the board were left in F C local. Yes, ma'am.
So the first question I have is, why the zones take effect in the middle of the year? As opposed to at the beginning of a school, this year?
That would be for any new students coming in. So for example, if I'm a new student coming in, the zone should hit, especially if they're approved November, December. That January, if I'm coming in, not to go to a new school and then be moved again the following year. So as soon as a student comes in, they go to the school that they're gonna love and stay there. That's why it's important to have that provision. If not, those procedural, not errors, but abnormalities happen, and then a child has to move within a couple of months to a new school.
So any existing student would start the following year, unless they were grandfathered based on provisions? Any new student coming to us would start immediately once the attendance zones, so that you can minimize the disruptions that the child and the family experience, right?
Can we?
Like, in other words, if you move to El Paso?
Yeah, yeah.
Now I understand because you explained it to me. And so there may be a way that you could wordsmith it, so that any average parent reading the board policy manual would be able to understand it on first take.
Yes.
Is new underlined or anything? Is that? Or perhaps just the insertion of the word new?
Yeah, yeah. And it, as soon as she said it, I read it, and I'm like, oh, that makes sense. I just, it wasn't super clear at the first moment. Because it's saying that it'll take effect in January.
And maybe I could start with the new students, because it's comma for new students. So what I'll do is wordsmith it to four new students, and then I'll add the ending piece.
And I think what I'm having the issue with is just board-approved attendance zones shall take effect in January.
So what I'll do is, for new students enrolling into the district in the spring semester, board-approved attendance zones shall take effect in January.
Or you should, yeah, you just need to, for new students?
I'll start with that.
Or, you know, but it.
Thank you.
I appreciate, you know, the work that staff has done to shrink the size of the community. I was concerned about the, you know, twenty-one member community. Personally, I still would like to see it smaller, but I mean, sixteen is much more manageable than twenty-one is. However, let me, let me ask you this. I know that there's some concern about being able to find two people that would, for each trustee that would serve on this committee. What happens if, if a trustee can only find one person? What, what happens at that point?
What I've seen done in the past or in other occasions is that, as a collective group, sometimes a trustee might have three individuals that are interested. Or the superintendent might have a recommendation that as a collective group, you all would identify those individuals to represent, especially the ten feeder patterns. I think that's the most important piece. As a board, you always have the opportunity to say, you know, for me, I will defer. My other, I would just like the one. And just ensuring again that there's representation for each of the feeder patterns. And collectively, that is a decision that you all could make.
And with the feeder pattern, I want us, because I know we say high school feeder patterns, but when we say collective representation, you know, a good cross-section of each feeder pattern at the various different levels, right?
That would help, especially elementary, the K eight, the middle school, high school. That way, as a community, everybody feels that there's somebody that's giving feedback on their behalf if they're not able to attend the community meetings.
I think we want something in terms of smaller is better, larger is not. Is there a way that instead of saying it has to be sixteen, it can be up to two? With each feeder pattern being represented, that way, if somebody with one feeder pattern doesn't wanna put forth two, it doesn't, it makes a smaller group.
Definitely. Is that something collectively, of course?
I mean, the, and I'm just gonna, you know, I think I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, kinda share with the board. I understand that sometimes it's difficult to wrangle more people. What you wanna make sure is that you have an adequate number of people so that you don't have a single voice that's drowning out the smaller group. So I just want us to make sure that we feel like up to two, you know, with the maximum of sixteen provides a balanced, you know, voice.
And you can even denote with each feeder pattern being represented, because that makes, that's minimum of ten. So really, we're looking at ten to sixteen. And I guess the next question, well.
Well, and that's in regulation. So again, we're taking your feedback. Obviously, we want something that the board's comfortable with, you know, regulations-wise. I mean, so that's where you all need to kinda share, what, what, if any, language would you want in the policy versus what stays in regulation? Because what stays in regulation is gonna be kind of administrative decision-making. And we can adjust it accordingly over time if we need to without bringing it back to the board. If it's something that's in policy, it would require us to bring it back.
When I talked to trustee Call, I was the one, and I, maybe that's why you were speaking. Who, or you're speaking for me, because I didn't know if I could find three, when we originally did it. But two, I think could handle. And are we gonna go back with the, are we? Well, the committee that was on for the census redistricting?
Well, if you choose, if that's the person that you choose, and you reach out to them, and they are willing to extend, you know, their work to this committee, then that is something that I would absolutely recommend, because I know that originally, the board said, you know, well, we found this person. You know, but in some cases, that person might not want to be involved in attendance zone work. Whereas they were very interested in, you know, redistricting. So that might be a good starting place for each one of you as board members to think about. But if you know that that person's not interested, then you're free to, you know, reach out to others.
And I just, I just have a personal preference in regards to that. I really feel like in the last committee meeting that we had for the census, that there was a gentleman there that was part of the Democratic, he was the chair of our local Democratic Party. And I particularly did not think that that was just for the, for the whole process. So this time around, it may be he wouldn't be part of this committee. It was my, his position as, he shouldn't be influencing, I don't think, our school board.
Again, each one of you would have your individual appointments. And so I think that, you know, your colleagues are listening to your feedback. But at the end of the day, each of you will have a voice in terms of who you recommend and how that representation will play out with the particular committee.
Sorry, Ms. Hanani, you were saying?
Oh, no, no, I was saying, it was my, my choice. And part of the reason why I selected him was because he had experience with that particular committee before. So he had served on that committee once.
But as a chair of the local Democratic Party, I don't, I think he had an unfair advantage over the rest of the group. And I don't really think that his position should be, somebody in that position should not be having any influence, should not have any influence on their preference.
Other feedback?
I'm just reading it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the language around up to two is, is good. I think it's incumbent on each one of us to put in the effort to find people that we think are gonna be representative of what will be good for our feeder pattern. So if you can't find two people, or you just wanna find one, that's your decision as a person that represents that area, right? And so I think when you're putting people on different boards, committees, whatever it is, there are certain things that you want in those people. I know we're thinking like, let's say, the mental health authorities board. When I was at the county, there was one thing that was like, we want a financial person, we want somebody that knows mental health, right? And here, you know, it's different things that might come up, whether it's like, we want a parent, or we wanna know somebody that knows this community really well, we want an alumni. Like, I think a lot of those things factor in. And we as board members just need to decide what's best for our appointments. And that's why each one of us gets up to two.
Quick question, when, assuming this passes next week, as written incorporating the feedback, when would we be, you know, naming the members of this, of this committee?
Yes, I know that you have possibly one or two new members coming in. So I would, I would recommend as soon as is appropriate for you all, you all can name. Just know that the work on the background is already working. Coming up next week, you all, a contract will come to you for our demographer, so the work is happening. So that would be my recommendation, once you have your, your team of seven complete. That's when you all could make the recommendation, so we could start meeting with them and creating our timelines, our meetings, and, and all of the protocol in this team.
The first few meetings would really just be explaining the purpose of their work. Probably charting the timeline of, you know, when we wanna do the initial phase of attendance zone work. And then letting them know what information we would be, you know, sharing with them, and dates, and things of that nature. But to be honest with you, absent of the demographers' report, there's not much work that can be done with, you know, the attendance zones. I mean, we have information in-house, but without, you know, the long-term outlook from a demographers' report, which should the board adopt, the, you know, the person that we're presenting to the board or the entity we're presenting to the board in, you know, next week. It would take, you know, and then the contract, once the contract is initiated, our anticipated date would be that the demographer report would be done by the end of the summer, right?
End of July, August? In that way, it would give us enough time to go out to the community, get feedback along with, along with our committee. And that way, we could bring you our recommendation, November-ish, November, December, our final recommendation. Feedback?
I have one more thought that I wanna address. So I know this is a brand-new policy, the policy before, like, it was only one sentence. One of the ones that I wanna call attention to is that a transfer student isn't eligible for district-provided transportation. And I understand the concept. The heartburn I have with that is that there could be exceptions. I mean, it's because of the way that's written, it could be special education students, it could be. The other thing that I need to think about too, is there are a lot of constituents in my communities where they do lose access to be able to get to school, depending on how the zones are moved. I'm not comfortable with that being in F C local, unless it's worded a different way. Just because there may be exceptions, probably has been exceptions to that statement.
I tend to agree with Jessie Hanani, and, you know, taking a broader look at it besides just the transportation thing, I.
Well, you could say individual circumstances shall be considered to determine eligible transportation or something like that. I mean, you know, I just, I want us to be cautious, because that, I understand the equity implications there. We're an open enrollment school district. Just, you know, even now, we don't, we don't provide transportation, you know, based on choices parents make.
And that's, and that's fine, but that's administration, administrative, and it works. I have a problem with this becoming a board policy, where if there is an exception, suddenly it has to come to the board. That's why I wanna kinda have this as light as possible, because, you know.
Well, that could be moved into a.
Regulation.
I would prefer that, and maybe in, with a clause that unless individual circumstances warrant, I don't know how you would put that, but I think that could be something for exceptions.
So move that to.
Regulation.
And I wonder, just on, I get the opener enrollment thing, but open enrollment aside, and specific to school attendance zones. and specific to s- school attendance zones, um, I, I do think the busing is fine in regulation, but is that gonna be a big part of what the committee will do when they're looking at zones for determining bus routes and stuff like that?
They don't determine the bus routes. What happens is we, you know, the zones are adopted by the, the attendance zones are approved and adopted by the board, and based on those attendance zones, then transportation does their work in terms of how they, you know, they look at hazardous bus routes. They look at a number of different things to determine the transportation, um, that will result as, you know.
The, the reason I'm asking, and, and maybe people have different situations in their own areas, but in my area with Navarrete opening up, and the combination of Armandaris with Basset, they're really far apart. And the people that live closer to Armandaris were probably, and I was told at some point before your time, um, that the people living closer to Armandaris are closer to Wigs, so they were gonna be zoned into Wigs. I'm not sure if that happened, but then one big issue that continues to happen with Navarrete is that there are kids that live two point one miles away, and, or, or one point nine miles away, I'm sorry, and they can't get bus services, because it's a two-mile thing. So that's where I'm thinking, like, can that happen hand-in-hand, where it's like, hey, committee, if you're gonna move this, there's students that are living here, or we're gonna zone these out, or we can get, is that part of the decision-making process, so the committee knows how to zone it correctly?
What, as admin- when administration is sharing information with the committee, those are pieces of information. Like, in other words, if you have a major thorough fare, that's something to be mindful of, because if you move the boundary this way, this is what's gonna happen, if you move it this, so you, you, you present a number of different scenarios so that you can land on, you know, the one that makes sense. Transportation sometimes has something to do with that in terms of the concentration of students, um, that would need transportation within a, an acceptable range, right? So, yeah, I mean, those things.
And then my tanya always comes up.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it's an, it's an important part of the conversation, especially, I don't wanna leave kids out, like, well, now you have to walk, because you're point one, you know?
And that's part of like, if you look at the decision principles in the, in, in, that, that will go into the regulation, they talk about reducing the number of split, splits kids have in terms of their feeder pattern. As pure as we can make the feeder pattern is what we're really after. Sometimes there's exceptions, and we might not be able to do that. Um, and then there's other decision principles that may include, like I said, major highway fare affairs, or, you know, transportation, and, and things of that nature, so.
The, the clause right underneath it, um, about students who are grandfathered in, has the same clause about transportation. Can we?
Yeah, I'll do.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was, I circled all of them.
They're grandfathered in indefinitely, right?
Yes. Well, until they, they age out to the next grade level, or to the next.
Grandfathered, because like.
The way this sounds is that they're grandfathered indefinitely. So you have students entering these grades will be grandfathered and may remain at their current campus. It doesn't say for how long.
At their current campus, so once they age out of their current campus, then that naturally.
Mm-hmm.
To the next campus, got you. Because that way, we're minimizing the number of campuses that they have to attend, um, as we're adjusting zones.
What's the purpose of this, like, in open enrollment? I'm, I'm a little confused.
The purpose, tell me again.
Yeah, why would we need to grandfather anybody, like, if, if we have open enrollment?
They may not have a transfer.
That way also, uh, transportation, again, that means that they don't have to do the open enrollment registration or transfer. They will be grandfathered into that, to that school, just to roll over.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I mean, we don't have the, 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 the problem currently. But you may. And when you, when you make cap and overflow decisions, these grandfather provisions, you know, you know, become, you know, an issue. Um, and so there may be pockets of the school district, maybe not as a whole, where, where this grandfather would become important, right?
And the way I've seen it is that sometimes for a parent, well, I've been there, you're adjusting boundaries, you know, my child has one more year to go, is going in to be a fifth grader. Why do I have to do a transfer? So this just gives them peace of mind that we're thinking of them. As, and then the other ones, they have the ability to submit a in-district transfer if, if they choose, but then that's another choice, but that way they know that we're thinking of them as we're moving forward in an adjusting zone.
Plus red tape, then, also.
Yes. And also that, that feeling that we care, or that we know, and, and that we're gonna make sure that we take care of them.
Because the opposite is true in a fast-growth district that really sticks to their attendance zones, doesn't have open enrollment. These provisions come into play, and they, they cause problems if you don't have them written.
And, and open enrollment also generates some equity issues, right? And so those things aside, we could be open enrollment all we want, but there is also capacity issues, right? So some kid could be like, I wanna go to this school, and they're like, you can't come here, even though it's open enrollment, 'cause we're at capacity. So I think that's also why it's important to have the zones now.
Right. Well, and again, when you see a campus heading towards capacity, you would need to have a cap and overflow plan, so that you could communicate to the public that, you know, we can no longer accept transfers at this campus because of la-la-la-la-la. However, then this, this provision would apply.
Um, one, one really minor, um, recommendation, the first paragraph, attendance zone, this is the work of the committee. Can you just, never mind, attendance zone advisory committee.
Anything else? Any other feedback that you all would like us to hear?
Yes, um, what's the clause we're changing the administration? Well, I guess it's not policy, it's the administrative side of it. Is it just, yeah, is that your discretion? Um, I just had questions on, I wanna clarify, Ms. Hanani, if you want to move, I know you said you wanted to move some of these away from the policy into the administrative, to make it.
We actually decided that.
You just wanna add the language change?
To, the transportation to, uh, administrative.
So would you take the whole approved attendance zones implementation provisions to move that completely? Or did you just look at the specific clauses that specifically mention transportation?
So I looked at the specific clauses, but if it makes more sense to, if it makes more sense to add in its entirety, I mean, then we can have that discussion, the approved attendance zones implementation.
I would just defer to Ms. Masias to make everything appropriate, that way.
I'm just, you know, I, I just wanna caution, because I feel like there's a level of transparency that we wanna make sure that our public, you, you know, in policy, um, and so. But, I mean, the will of the board prevails, so if you all feel like actually one of those bullets needs to be put into regulations, you're, you certainly recommend that feedback as well.
I have a, I guess, a bigger overarching question as we go into that conversation. And part of the issue that I had with this is that it was putting a lot into board policy that could have been administrative. And I know there's a lot of large school districts that don't have, uh, FC local, what's the, can you, you know why that is, like, why, you talk about transparency, but are these other school districts not being transparent? I mean, what's the rationale? No, and I don't, no, and I don't, I don't mean it like that, I just mean, it's.
Well, I think it, some of it has to do with the context of the community. That may not be an expectation. I would share that in our community, transparency seems to be something that is critical to the community. I would say that also there have been issues that we, um, have dealt with as an entity, you know, associated with, uh, you know, just movement of students in, in general. And so this is an effort to show the community that we're going to create a policy, you know, via the board, so that we can govern, you know, decisions that may cause disruption in, you know, where kids go to school, um, and that there's a basis for that. And the, the nitty-gritty details can be in, in administrative regulations, which are also, you know, open for the public to review. Um, I mean, that's really where I see, you know, the context for our school districts, maybe, you know. But again, if we feel like this is more transparency than what the, what the, what the community would expect, then again, I'll defer to the board.
Well, I, I think, I think you're being just as transparent by putting it into regulation. I mean, for me, I would see where there would be a lack of transparency is when you would change something without letting the public know. So maybe if there's a process where there's an administrative change to regulation, you need to be aware of it. I'm having a hard time connecting the dots on where, why the regulation part isn't as transparent, unless changes aren't being communicated to the community.
They're transparent, I wouldn't dispute that. Uh, but I also, you, you know, what, what we wanna steer away from is the perception that, you know, administration, um, is, you know, that there's, there's less oversight of administration in terms of determining the process and the protocols going forward with major moves that impact their children. I mean, I guess that, that's where I just want us to have a balanced, you know, approach, so that there's, you know, an appropriate governance from the board level. Um, and then the, you know, deferring, you know, the authority to administration where it's appropriate.
So then for those bullet points that we talked about transportation, is, can we just, I know you're reworking the language, Ms. Masias, but can we not just put something that calls it back to administration and let you develop the process for how that would, those, those exemption would happen? I mean, that gives us the flexibility to look at each circumstance, um, because then it's resting in administration, but the language is very clear in policy that you're not gonna be eligible unless you fit the exemption as outlined in administrative, whatever it is, regulation, FC regulation. Because I, I just, I don't wanna trap us, ourselves into, I wanna codify as much as we can in pol- in policy, of course, but then I don't wanna be trapped into a situation where you don't have your flexibility to do what you need to do. Should, should we get a complaint from a parent or a situation or circumstance where we all know the right thing to do is to provide it, but our policy says black and white, no?
Well, what you could do, instead of doing all those bullets, you could say, um, uh, board-approved school attendance zone, uh, adjustments shall follow provisions outlined in regulate, you know, FC regulation. And then that's it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and then.
And I'm happy with that, and then, so from my perspective, that's what I want, because I just want you to have more flexibility when it comes to these things, because as we say, this is a human business, this, that's where you're gonna hear most of your stories. Whereas two miles makes sense, you get the two point one, you get the one point nine, those are actual impacts it will have. If you have the flexibility to address that, that's where I would like to see the flexibility.
Yeah. I mean, the only other one that I would want, want you all to consider is that last bullet, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a bullet, maybe it's just a paragraph, and, and, in terms of when, when, when they would take effect. But I, I mean, if, 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 if that one also is something that you would want in regulation, then that's fine, too. And we could just suggest that instead of colon with all of those, um, bullets, we could just make a general statement that those provisions would be outlined in administrative regulation.
I'd be fine with that last one, it speaks to the greater policy and not just a specific component of the overall attendance zones. I mean, it's just talking about when our attendance goes into effect, but. There's so many great little, it's your grandfathered in number one, number two, we're an open district. There, I think there's enough things there that, that kind of excuse that away personally.
All right, so we can, we can do that as well.
And then on regulation, just had a couple of questions, um, when we get through the decision principles, I'm assuming they're not in any order correct, they're just, okay. Um, I wanted to talk about number five, the facility utilization. What, how are we determining the facility utilization?
Well, that'll come to you all, um, you know, when we do our, you know, in the one-on-one, um, meetings that we're gonna have associated with the facilities assessment, and then when we have the facilities assessment, uh, presentation, um, that will be specifically defined, but by that time, you know, we'll do that for the board before the final presentation would be considered in finalizing that report, so that we can define what we, you know, how much utilization would factor into, um, the final score for, uh, each building, and then exactly how we would want that, you know, there, there's something that would be recommended by ACOM, but that doesn't preclude the board from providing feedback on any adjustments to be considered before they draft their final report.
Would it be codified at some point? I'm assuming in some document it will be referenced.
Facilities master plan.
Okay.
Would codify that.
So then that might be something that we wanna insert there, per the, the facilities master plan, so it's gonna be an evolving document. I, I, maybe our standards will change from time to time about what considers maximum utilization, especially as we look towards new programming opportunities, it, it may just change, I just would feel more comfortable, because I know that there's a def- a couple definitions going around about what utilization is of a campus. I don't want it just to make it seem like it's a X and O's kind of decision, it's, it's a lot more.
Well, and there's two definitions also that we need, and, and we talked about that today, and so it's important for you all as, as board members in your one-on-one meetings to know what those two definitions are, and which one we would actually use, because there's maximum in terms of what the entire building could, and then there's actual. And so those are two separate things, and we have to be clear about the numbers that are associated with each one of those going forward, or the public will get confused.
I think the facilities master plan is the best thing, because it takes into consideration the programming we have in that place. Takes that conversation away from them, and more to what, the numbers and what the further study. And then the last question I had is, I know that we had discussion about how the feeder patterns may be, um, represented, or trying to, but they maybe was the term I believe we used. Right now, it reads that it shall, as it has to, do we need to change that language to fit what the conversation was, or we contend with, with it, we must?
Based on the, the feedback that I received, I felt that every feeder pattern should be represented. Um, that's, that, therefore, the, the language, if you all feel that it's more flexible, that's perfectly up to you all. But based on the feedback, I, um.
Well, you could say every effort will be made so that the committee shall be composed of, you know, that gives you a level of flexibility, because let's just say that you all do your appointments, and then I bring to you all, okay, I've got your appointments, and here are two areas which don't seem to have representation, you know. How would you all like to, you know, but, but it gives us flexibility, because you all might say, well, maybe not, but, you know, they had a, a student that was part of that, you know, before, and just graduated from there, or, you know, something like that, you know.
Are we saying that they should be parents?
Or it could be any, anyway, it could be somebody who has experience with that community, you know, and even though they might not have a child, or may not live in that any, area anymore, they still may have very, they still may be very well-versed in that community. I mean.
You can argue anybody could have an interest in the community, right? So, I mean, it should really be left to us who we feel has the interest of, of that community, so.
Correct. Again, in my experience, the most, um, not vocal, but truly dedicated are parents, because they're truly, um, they live within the community, they're seeing their children go through, so they have a little bit more, um, exposure to those that are gonna give them input and feedback. However, I've seen a little bit of, of all. I've just, again, that's my opinion of what I've seen.
So the last point I'll make is, there's very few chances that we as a board will know who each other are appointing, because it's a board item, and, and we wanna be very wary of that. Um, I know that the goal is to find representation, not just around our high school feeder patterns, but to what you said, Ms. Iver, looking at our middle schools and looking at our elementary schools. I don't know what that process looks like, but something needs to be considered for us to be aware where there may be gaps that we can fill if we have an open appointment, because.
Well, we could create like a Google form or something like that, so that, I mean, it's not, it's not like necessarily a secret.
Whatever the system is, just so that we know if we need to get elementary, school, representation, then we can look in that direction, and, and kind of look at it. But that's it for me.
Is, is there, um, a recommended, I guess, every so often look at attendance boundary lines, is that?
Well, then, we, we would have it so, I mean, it wouldn't be that we would adjust them on a regular basis, but, you know, we're gonna do an annual enrollment analysis every year. And so should we see patterns that are starting to emerge that would warrant us thinking about that down the line, then, you know, you would, but pretty much you reveal them based on your annual enrollment analysis, and then you might make firm recommendations. You know, there's certain things that trigger you looking at your attendance zones. If we were a fast-growth district, it would be if you're building a new school. Um, you obviously always wanna look at attendance zones at that. On the flip side, if you're a school district like us where enrollment is declining, or, you know, and we're working to stabilize it, it may be important for us to look at attendance zones, should we see a pattern where there's significant decline that we. It may be important for us to look at attendance zones, should we see a pattern where there's significant decline that we might need to address, right?
And, and so when was the last time we looked at them?
I understand that attendance zones haven't been reviewed in at least a decade. Which is why this is an opportune time for us to just press the reset button.
And, and so that's why I'm wondering if, if it makes it a little stronger where it's just a annual enrollment analysis. Um, to determine if a review is necessary, or, or some language, that way, um. It's understood when it needs to happen, it's not necessarily like you have to do it every year, but gives the tool to be, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Just like a little clarifying on that.
I mean, there's certain major events that typically trigger a review of attendance zones. Bond turning, new school being built. Decline, you know, significant declines in particular areas, you know, things like that, or major growth in a particular area. Program expansion, you know, so. Alright, so FC. Get us back on track.
Yes, thank you.
We can go back to DUC and then see.
Good afternoon, board members, Ms. Alvedra. Here, administration is recommending the adoption of the changes for policy DC local. And we're proposing the addition of the employee emergency leave donation pool. Basically what this is, is a benefit for our employees, and in, in a way to assist employees in dealing with catastrophic illness or injury. Of their, uh, of the employee, this is a pool that will allow employees to contribute, uh, contributors. To transfer their, some of their accumulated local leave to another district employee, which would be the receiver. This will be submitted, um, in a request form donation to employee benefits. And if approved, uh, the hours will be transferred from the contributor's accumulated local leave balance to that of the receiver's. Um, uh, leave balance as well. Um, the donated hours received by an employee shall not exceed two hundred and forty hours or thirty days. Per school year at the receiver's rate of pay, so basically what we're saying is the recipient will only receive up to the amount that is donated. Um, the donated hours, uh, will be approved, that pool will be approved, uh, one time here by the board, and then, uh. If it, if it is approved, then we would go ahead and begin this process with our employees.
So what are the specific areas of the policy that, uh, we either inserted language or clarified language?
So I can speak to that, essentially the entire, uh, language related to the pool is new, so previous to this recommendation of the policy is that.
Some page five.
Page, start them page five, on local.
Page five of.
And you'll see it bold. So it's, if you see it on page five, you see it in bold, that, that whole area is new to our policy, it wasn't there before. And that's where we're proposing the adoption of this section.
I was just wanting to call the board's attention and where they could find it in there.
So. Okay, so this is something that's really cool, I think, and it's, it's an issue that I think I've been dealing with a lot, um, with. Just constituent trying to get through this, so I guess, um, I'm trying to understand, somebody goes on FMLA and. That FMLA runs out at some point, and then after that, this would kick in?
So FMLA, what, what that entitles the employee is to, is to job protection, so the FMLA can be paid or not paid. Because it's based on what the employee has in accumulated leave, so they, essentially FMLA is gonna protect the employee's job. The leave is applied based on what the employee has in their own bank for accrued leave, so anything like a pool or a bank, which is what we currently have. Is based on what is donated, uh, to the employee to use after they've exhausted their accrued leave.
And, and I guess. You might, you might not have this, but I guess how many people have run out of stuff and then they're like. Leave without pay, like how many people do you think?
We do have those numbers, um, maybe not with us, but it's something that we do track that we could.
But it's probably not very high, right?
It's not very high.
And, and so, um, with this cap, cause there, there was a situation that happened last year with one of the teachers that. She came to me and was like, I ran out of leave and I'm not gonna get paid, I'm not getting a check, and I'm like, well, can't somebody just donate hours, and she's like, no, that. Expired, there was a, like, every year, there's a. Like an expiration date, and, and so can we remove that expiration date so we could also have that?
So.
And, and that's a catastrophic, which is, which proceeds this new section.
So let, let me speak to that, because we have a variety of benefits, there, there's planning, obviously that we can, as employees, we can do. So you can purchase your short-term disability, which will provide that support, if you were to, uh, exhaust your accrued leave, then the short-term disability could be a benefit that you have. In addition, you can contribute to the district's catastrophic sick leave bank, and that, what that means is that you're contributing for your own benefit for future use, so you contribute two days. Uh, ev- each year, and if in the future you exhaust your leave and you're out due to some type of catastrophic illness or injury. Then you're entitled to up to sixty days, thirty at a time they're evaluated, so you are entitled to receive up to sixty days if you exhaust your own accrued leave. And so that's considered a bank, this new benefit is a pool, which means you're contributing for the benefit of one of your colleagues.
Rather than just to yourself.
To yourself. So I have. There's a variety of ways, I mean, this is definitely a good method to allow employees to support one another, it took, it took more extensive reacher, research. You have to look at, you know, sometimes tax ramifications in terms of, of, of how you, how you initiate or implement the bank.
And what if somebody has, like, I don't know, like, there was a situation where it was like, I know a young employee that is not gonna use any of their sick leave. And this person really needs all of it, so. What's the reasoning behind that person not being able to transfer those hours just directly to them and?
So that's what this policy is.
This would, but it's only up to thirty days, and, and why didn't we get to thirty days, why is it, why is there a cap, I guess is what I'm asking.
So, really, if you look at the research, I mean, you wanna have an established protocol and standards, you don't wanna have something that's. Um, thirty days, it basically equates to a month and a half, uh, that provides the employee the opportunity to assess where they are and, and give some planning time. Uh, for, for future.
Well, and I think it's also an opportunity to reevaluate. Internally, whether there's any, you know. Other, you know, things that need to be looked at, but see, within that month and a half, you might be able to counsel an employee about. Short-term disability, and, you know, this other catastrophic, and then, you know, so that you can. You know, really sit down with employee and help them plan out, um, and they may not, as a result of that. May not need any more than a, than a, than a month and a half, but I guess, I don't know if the language is flexible enough for it to be reevaluated to determine whether it needs to be extended beyond. The thirty or not, I mean.
Well, I, I think we also need to be cautious, just that you, you wouldn't want an employee to exhaust their leave, they may need it in the future, so it's really providing. A, a, a short-term support for your colleagues, but still ensuring that you're in a position where if you need the days later, that you haven't exhausted all of your leave as well.
Just going off of the catastrophic, um. Since we're having this discussion. Two days, how many, how many of our employees actually enroll in the bank, the catastrophic leave bank?
In the catastrophic?
About five hundred, five hundred or more.
Five hundred a year.
I, I'm wondering if. Employees would be a lot more likely to enroll in the policy if it was just donating, what, do you know, one day, do you know what's typical and?
What was that question again?
I'm wondering if there's a big difference, if the reason why a lot of employees are not participating in this, cause five hundred isn't a lot. If the reason that they're not is because it's two and not one, because I can tell you, if you're a young teacher coming in, you're. Thinking about how you need those ten days and you're not anticipating a, a major life issue that is gonna eat up twenty percent of your leave for the year. Um, so I just wondering if we can possibly look at that policy, I, I think my experience in working at other districts is it was one day that was pulled from my bank. So I'm just wondering if that's prohibitive to employees enrolling into the catastrophic.
So the only thing I would caution there is, you have, you, you wanna make sure that you also don't deplete the bank, so the two days allows you to be with the sustainability of the bank. Um, and in terms of the five hundred employees, you're right, a lot of employees don't want to give up their days and don't feel like they're gonna need it in the future, um.
I mean, I'm just wondering if you have a thousand employees donating one day, a thousand employees donating one day is better than five hundred employees donating two days. You know, we want this to be accessible, we want more of our employees to, it's an insurance policy, right? Essentially an insurance policy, but if not a, a lot of our employees are taking the insurance, then I think maybe we can look at it. Um, bring it back at a later date, just so that we can evaluate. Um, how many of our employees actually enrolling are utilizing it? Um, I remember this being a, a really big deal in, in other districts, but like I say, twenty percent of, of an employee's leave is, it's a lot, especially for somebody who's young.
Okay, we can do that.
To your, to, to, to your question, are you saying we can bring back this policy at a later date to discuss that specific thing and move forward with this?
Yeah, no, this, uh, to, to be clear, I, I'm.
This is good.
I'm, I'm very happy to see this, I, I know, um, you know. I, my experience as a, as a parent of a childhood cancer survivor, I, you know, this touched me personally. Because when you're in a situation, especially when you're having to care for, you know, either a parent or a child, and you just don't know what to do, it's. It's very, very, very scary, so I love that we're giving our, um, employees an additional six weeks to buy them some time to take care of, you know, their family members, so thank you. Um, to all of those who, this is so important to you and for you all putting the work together, I'm, I'm happy to see this being done.
I guess, um. Kind of what the superintendent was saying about that month and a half buys them time to kind of sit down with them and say, these are your options. And thinking about that, is there a way to include some language that says, and I don't wanna use the word grief. But I can't think of another one right now, but, cause I know we have a grievance process and that's a whole thing, but I guess like a, a reassessment can, after. Those thirty days, a reassessment takes place with the employee to determine other options or see if there's a way that in a, cause I just feel like it's such a small group of employees. I don't see it, that's why I was asking how many would be affected, um, it's just like one, two, five employees every year that are going through this, and it's like, you just hit a wall. And now they're at leave without pay. Um, codifying some sort of language there where they could come in and reassess that would probably be important to me.
Okay, so we can look at maybe like some language in regulation to, to identify.
In regulation or in policy, I, I mean, um, I, I think, I, I think that's a, a big suzy, look at this, if this is possible type of thing. But, um, that way it's written somewhere that, um, once they exhaust it, as also like customer service, that employee relations type thing, it's like. You're not going to be like, sorry, that's it, I have, there's something that comes after, it's like, let's look at your situation, let's see how we can help you, um, do something else, I know that you're really ill, yeah, whatever it is, right?
So I can tell you that we do that already, uh, under, uh, Mr. Chavez and employee benefits, they have one-to-one conversations with every single employee. That is out for medical reasons, where they walk through where they are with their benefits in terms of their benefits being paid, what their leave status is, what their, so that does happen already, um.
Cause this particular person just was like, sorry, we can't do anything, like, we did everything we could, and so that's why I'm thinking if it's written somewhere, there, there's a. There's more options for the employee and they.
I think the, the, where, probably we can have some conversations, but ultimately you get to a point where financially, yes, that might be that there are no other options. But in terms of helping the employee assess their circumstances and choosing the best option for them moving forward, but it may not necessarily mean that that has financial.
And, and because it could be, it could be the difference where it's like, okay, well, you hit the thirty days, but you needed an extra four days, and now your next check is gonna be four days. Short, you know, and so it's like, I want you to have that ability to be like, well, we could do an extra four days for this one employee or some, I. When they're asking for another thirty days, or, you know, like, I, I see where it gets a little hard, but at least to have that option. Where you could administratively do that, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to talk to that.
Okay, and, and then the other thing that I had is, I noticed there was a change on page nine. Um, to chief human capital management officer from assistant superintendent for human resources, what was that change?
It's a title change.
That, so now that's just your.
That's just her new title.
It's just a title change.
Okay, so there's.
When I reorganized the cabinet, the senior leadership team, uh, positions, uh, we renamed, you know, there were some. If you recall, there were some people that were, had a title of assistant soup, some people had chief, some people had deputy, it was, there was not necessarily a senior leadership. Alignment or consistency, and so this was one of those adjustments, and so, um, I think that as they were reviewing this policy, they noted that that language was old. And so they're updating it to that.
In regards to Ms. Cortez, in regards to the pool and the bank, those are readily available, right?
Yes.
Needed it tomorrow, it'd be there, but the other insurance that you're speaking of, is, that's the one that you could get at open enrollment, right?
That's correct, that.
In October or whenever you have it, when is it?
It's being, uh, July, it'll be effective in September.
Yes, so it's in July?
When you enroll.
What's that?
When you enroll in it.
When you enroll, right, so all of those insurances that we think are available to them really aren't. And the bank that there is.
They are available.
I mean, and what, but until you sign up for it and.
Well, well, but I think that's the, there is a level of responsibility that comes from the employee, right, we have a, a responsibility as an organization. To educate the employee about what their options are, but the employee has a responsibility then to determine whether they're gonna take advantage of any of those options or not. And they, they are given access to open enrollment every year to reevaluate what they've chosen in terms of options to change their health insurance plan. To include, you know, short-term disability if they didn't have it before, you know, and all of those.
And that I understand, but I was just making reference to what you were mentioning. On availability within thirty, or what was it, forty-five days?
A, a, a month and a half, you mean?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, yeah, because I mean, if you don't have short-term disability, I don't think that you can, what are the provisions to add short-term disability? Is it only during the open enrollment period, or could you add it at any given time, it's different than insurance, right?
It's during the open enrollment period, but the other thing is depends on a life event, and that goes off of section one twenty-five. And that's in IRS regulation that states, based on these events, you can add this policy, and only cause there's certain tax benefits that are provided to employees based on when they enroll in.
So are those available effective right away, you say?
Um, the life events are, yes.
So an employee has several opportunities, they have the opportunity at the time of hire, when benefits are presented to them and they make their selections. They have an opportunity every year at the time of open enrollment where you select any changes you're going to make, and number three, anytime you have a life, a changing event, which could be. Your spouse had changes in their benefits, it could be you changed your job classification, makes you eligible for different benefits, so there's several opportunities. And that, those opportunities include education that we provide on what is available to employees.
I just want to think, I know Ms. Cortez and Mr. Shepherd, we met about a month and a half ago to kind of work this out and kind of do it, so I just appreciate the amount of time and work you, you, you did put into this. I, Ms. Iver took the words right out of my mouth, what I do wanna just be cautious of within, just tell this board, what my perspective is. I want this to be the stopgap, not something that people are using to avoid the catastrophic pool, cause we do wanna push people more to that catastrophic pool, so. Whereas I understand extending it from that thirty days to sixty days, things of that, I, I just caution us to be very cautious on that, because. To your point, if, if we don't change the policy at some point from two days to one day, there has to be some benefit to going that route of investing into the pool and saying this is the best way, or bank rather, right, bank? Bank, um, it's, it's more cost-effective and, and more beneficial to go to the bank than to rely on these situations. Um, because one of my concerns, and I know we discussed it, was this is limited to family members, and so what, last thing you wanna do, and I look at it from my perspective. I, I'm pretty young, so say my, my, my parents were in the district, they donated their time, time to me, cause my child got sick, then if it comes to a time where they get. very sick, they already donated their leave to me, I'm out of leave, and so we create this void that does exist, and that's why we wanna make sure that this is a last case, in my mind at least, policy or use. So, whereas I see there's value in making it more accessible and expanding it, I mean, I'd leave that to administrative, for you guys to figure that out and have that flexibility to do it, 'cause we never wanna say no, we wanna come maybe look at the situation, but if we do put administrative, I'd like to see it very.
This is for anybody, anybody can donate.
For this one, it's, for the pool, it's restricted to family members, correct? Am I understanding that, is it, did it change from our conversation?
You have to, it has to be for the care of.
For the care of, okay, I apologize. That same, same, same situation, I guess, would apply, so I just, I just want this to be the, 'cause I don't wanna have a rivalry, rivaling policy for catastrophic.
You can donate to a colleague for their own medical condition or that of, of their family.
So, that, that, when we talked, that, that did change, right? I was not losing my.
No, it, it was, it was.
Like that too? Okay, then I apologize, I misunderstood it. So, I just wanna, I just wanna be careful in that, this is, this is a last-case resort, you know, we, we just recently found out this example with, with the individual that came to the board and said, hey, this is kind of a gap that exists in the district, that's what this is in my mind. Again, I, I'd be, it's pretty rough if you're, you know, donating to the catastrophic bank, and then, in reality, this could be the replace, and we don't want to do that, so, whereas I see the value of extending it to sixty days or looking toward upon request or things of that nature, not only does that tax y'all's workload, but it also says then, why am I gonna use two, two of my days to get into the bank and be a part of that program? So, I don't know if there's a conversation needs to happen on that, 'cause it sounds like it's very difficult, Josh, but that's the only thing I'd, I'd caution us on with this specific one. But outside of that, this is another one of those, this is why it's great to work at EPISD policies, this is, we care about the employee, we are a team, we are a family, this is one of the policies that we can look at and revive at, some impact, but not a great impact to the district.
I agree.
And then I need to ask, i- is there a provision in there, I don't recall, like, when you do leave, that you can donate more or extra, whatever you didn't use for those that have?
So, the city, and the county's the same way, when you left, when you no longer had employment there, whatever time you had accrued left in sick leave, you would donate that to a, a bank, and then that bank would then, so I, I guess it would be in this case maybe to the catastrophic to maybe alleviate those concerns of two days. That's how we're at the city and county and the state does it the same way, you have an option of you retaining that, should you ever re-seek employment with that organization, you instantly recapture your sick leave? Or if you just decide I'm done, i.e. retirement, you can decide if those hours go to the bank or if you just, they go away at that point.
There was a maximum of eighty hours.
We can look at that.
If you could.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, that way, yeah, for those of us that, for those that would wanna change and, you know, change jobs, and they know somebody could really use it, just give them all the, their, the maximum.
Thank you.
Or maybe eighty hours. That would be a nice provision for them too.
Okay, thank you, so are we done with this item, any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to proposed revisions to Board Policy CH Local in acquisition.
Good afternoon, Board Trustees, Ms. Ayahvedra. So, we bring to you proposed revisions to Policy CH. We've basically broken, what I've done, we've done is we've broken down the policy revisions into four sections, and so I'll try to walk you and give you pages that you can reference. So, the, the first revision that we're proposing is on page two, and it's the exception of emergency contract, contracts, yes, this is a policy update, TASB Policy Update one seventeen, that is, basically, it's a provision delegating the authority to the superintendent to contract for replacement of construction or repair of equipment or facilities in the event of a catastrophe or emergency of natural disaster. So, this is aligning ourselves to the TASB Policy Update one seventeen. The next update or recommendation we're providing or presenting is on page one, and this one is one that we've discussed several times at board meetings, as you are required to approve, or, or we bring forward to you approval of transactions with vendors that have exceeded the one hundred thousand dollar aggregate threshold. So, the, the proposal here is to give you, to revise a language, to say the board delegates to the superintendent the authority to make single budgeted purchases of goods and services that cost up to one hundred thousand. That would eliminate the per vendor and aggregate discussion. I'll share the policy enacted that provision back in twenty thirteen initially, and so this is requesting you, your consideration to revise it. I'll share that right now, even a single purchase of two hundred dollars, and you'll see one of these in role board meeting, takes about fifty days to get processed because of the timelines that we follow to prepare items to be presented to the board. So, this would definitely facilitate the day-to-day operations. It doesn't take away any requirements to bring forward large transactions over a hundred thousand. We will still continue working through the RFP process to ensure we purchase focused and more items that are detailed or, or meet the needs of our district and not just solely cooperatives. What we also are providing to you, and it, it states there that the superintendent shall provide quarterly reports to the board showing purchases by vendor, so that you can see the transactions that are coming through by each vendor, that this will guarantee, or, or show you, give you assurances of what activity is going on with the various vendors throughout the district. Monthly administration will be doing the reviews so that we don't wait till the third month before we present something that is maybe an anomaly or, or something that needs attention. So, that would be the proposal on that change there.
Hold on, Martha, real quick before you go forward, so should it be, and this is just a, a minor detail, the superintendent shall provide quarterly reports to the board showing purchases by vendor or two vendors?
By vendor.
By vendor? That have exceeded a hundred thousand, and it should be vendor, single, right?
It would be a report, yes. The next, the next section is what I'm titling, Sections Removed. So, on page three, you can see that we've cross-lined sole source, and the reason we are eliminating all that verbiage from there is because Policy CH Legal already gives us the, the guidance and the requirements on sole source activities. The board would still have to approve it, and you can see that on the first page, however, that additional verbiage is just removed, we did meet with legal counsel to ensure that we were on the right track as far as those recommendations go. Quotes on Permissive Bids, that's page four, we, we are removing that verbiage as well, and that was just to ensure that we're abiding and ensuring that anything that exceeds, as, in aggregate by commodity or category, that at fifty thousand, we do go to the board for approval through an RFP. Did I say that correctly?
There does need to be an underlying contract in place, either through the district or one of our co-ops.
And then the other section we're eliminating is on page six, and it's titled specifications, and that's basically just to, it's repetitive of stating that bids are required, and that's something that we already have in our policy as a requirement. The, the last section of revisions that we are proposing, and these are basically sprinkled through pages two through six of the policy, and they're just correcting the department's name, and also aligning our, the verbiage to align to our current bid processes, and for example, on page two, at the very bottom, you can see electronic bids or proposals, so that was something that we currently have in place and has been in place, however, the policy did not reflect the act, the, the current process. And that pretty much outlines the revisions that we're proposing on Policy CH. Any questions?
Yeah, okay, so, for the emergency please, a piece of it, does a declaration of disaster have to be declared in order for that? City or?
That's, that's.
How would we have to meet?
I would say that that's a pretty typical provision in, in, in this, in CH policy for most.
Pretty fine, I just wanna understand that component, if it's the city, the county, or the state that kind of picks off that.
It could be a weather event that causes us to call an emergency board meeting and to put some emergency provisions in. I know that in my previous district, because of the frequency of hurricanes, that was something that we had to do.
The board would have to meet, that's all I wanna check, 'cause I know like, in the city, the city couldn't do it unless the state did certain components, that's why I was checking. And then sole source is the other question I had, because I was wondering why those take out, it makes sense. The last thing I'm wondering is, just, is a hundred thousand dollars, is too low still for the single one? So, I look at kind of our big capital, not capital, but technology investments that will exceed a hundred thousand, sometimes supplies will exceed a hundred thousand just based on the amount of, that we're ordering for the number of campuses, so I kinda look to y'all, the experts in the procurement space for EPISD, is that still a little, is that still gonna bring a lot of items back to this board and delay us by, I mean, fifty days is way too much in my opinion, just for this, schools are waiting for it, still applies whatever it may be.
The, the difference in, in the way the policy was worded previously, it was per vendor.
Per vendor, or aggregate vendor, yes.
For each, so this is single budgeted purpose goods, so if I bought, the single item would be laptops, that, if it exceeded a hundred thousand, it'd come to me. Will supplies fall under a single one, or would it be broken down to the type of school supplies?
Let's use an example like, like, and we'll use, because we use it on both ends, and I'm gonna use a vendor that provides supplies, they could, supplies could be used in the classroom and they could be used in the office. So, if, if, in, in, in aggregate, the department is to purchase, say, ACT department's gonna buy supplies for all the classroom and it exceeds a hundred thousand, or it's at, say, ninety thousand, that purchase order can go through without having to come to board approval, and then we can have another campus that's gonna buy two hundred dollars worth from that same vendor, and if, in aggregate, they're all a hundred thousand, but they're all individual purchases with different needs altogether, that would be something that would not come to the board.
Based on campus, then.
But there's also controls in place, you wanna talk a little bit about the behind-the-scenes controls so that we can make sure that there's not abuse of.
So, the first and foremost, I, I'd like to share that the first approach will be by ensuring that we have RFPs created so that we get the best discounts and pricing on, on goods and services we, we, we purchase as a district. I'll share that right now, as of today, I guess, we've, we've issued twenty-nine RFPs in comparison to thirteen two years ago and to last year. So, the idea or the approach that the district is taking as far as how we procure items is by being, planning ahead of, of time and ensuring that we cover most of these needs through an RFP, which will then, that would be the approval we have. In addition to that, the, the review of the, we have a dashboard that's been created through one of our caps, we've worked, we've helped department to get a dashboard that'll help us monitor vendor activity. So, on a monthly review of our vendors, when we identify that perhaps a vendor is used concurrently with transactions that appear to be of the same nature or same purpose, then those would be flagged as not allowable to ensure that we, and then in turn, on a quarterly basis, we will report those to you.
And we're centralizing our funds, like, we're moving our funds, we're, this is what I, how I understood, I'll say that, just so if I'm wrong. Whereas we were kind of allowing this, the, each individual campus to make decisions, what we're doing more is centralizing that process, really using the data and information that we have to kind of purchase as needed for the campuses versus how it's been traditionally done.
Not necessarily, but I, I do believe that we've created a workflow system that allows oversight when there's a campus request, so that it could be an Assistant Superintendent or somebody from the academics division that picks up the phone and says, there's a request here, it's in my queue to approve, I have some questions, talk to me a little bit more about why, because this seems to be a duplicate of so-and-so-and-so. Do you understand what I mean? So, the workflow that they've created creates an opportunity for a little more vetting before, so that there's, so you wanna balance the autonomy of what, so that there's still an ability for a campus to request, but we're also making sure that those requests are aligned with, you know, our instructional program and the direction that we're going and so forth and so on.
And that was the change that we made with the, the, the funds at the local campuses, correct? That was part of that process that existed, right? Okay, so it's just.
It's just more systemic and more oversight as to how we're, we're procuring and what we're procuring, more importantly.
So, if we were seeing fifty days delay in the process to prepare for the board item, get it, what are we looking at now? Are we, we're not eliminating that fifty days perfectly, but.
Well, definitely, at least by a week or so, because the procurement, the purchase order is one thing, and then the actual ordering of the, the material. So, the, the purchase order approval, with the assumption that everything is aligned, you know, that if it's federal funds, they've met the requirements, that if it's, assuming all those things are already in, in line, then.
You've got about fifteen days.
Fifteen.
So, we're talking about a month versus two months, okay, perfect, that's great news.
Seems like there's a lot of checks and balances already, so I'm all for increasing.
Yeah, it's one of those things we'll have to assess and evaluate if this adjustment, you know, comfort level of the board.
And I really think that maybe, and you get to see it too as the final, right? So, I'm, I'm for raising it at limit, like, you have for a hundred thousand up to two hundred and fifty thousand. I really do, and I, and for maybe the larger purchases, I mean, you get to see them anyways, so. I guess anything beyond that, they'd come to us, right?
I mean, we stayed to the hundred and thousand, the hundred thousand dollar threshold as it's presented in the policy, we just adjusted the circumstances that would require us to bring that to the board, and so that may be a good starting point, you know, prior to adjusting the amount, but again, that's up to the board and where they would like to see that.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the hundred thousand, just because of how much work this has taken to get here, 'cause it all started with the buckets, right, and that was in twenty-nine.
A month and a half ago.
Yeah, like, yeah, and that was a whole thing, and so, I, I don't wanna just put less controls in just for more efficiency, because then it could yield other catastrophic things on, on the backend. And, and so, I guess my question is on your example, like, a campus gets ninety thousand, another one two hundred dollars, but if they did fifteen thousand dollars, that would be one oh five, and so that would trigger?
No, it wouldn't trigger, because those are all single purchases from different.
It's just a single purchase from each campus, so each campus has up to a hundred thousand dollars that they can do. It's, okay, I mean, they probably won't do it, but my.
Some of them don't even have that big of a budget to do.
Right, okay.
But the aggregate, I, I mean, when you think about an organization, a large hours, you can.
The aggregate is fast.
You know, but if you, if, but if it's an overarching commodity, then that's, that's where it's a little bit different, right?
And, and then, as I shared with you, the, the bids, the process to go out for requests or proposals has significantly increased, because before it was probably like a, it just facilitate, the buckets facilitated avoiding having to go out for those RFPs, but the reality is, if you go for a bid, you tailor the needs of the district and the purpose that you need for specific needs, more to, to what the district needs by going for an RFP. And then we're also standardizing to guarantee best price as well, so we're trying, we're working through RFPs as well as the co-ops, but as I stated, I asked Joseph to share with us how many we had gone, how many bids we've issued this year, and twenty-nine have been processed.
So, it's a balancing act, because there are a lot of benefits to going through co-ops, because sometimes, especially when, you know, some of the co-ops are done through regional, regional service centers, not necessarily just region nineteen, but across the state, and.
Even, even nationally, you can, you can reach that national level, so, it really is kinda looking at those prices that are set up through those and determining how best to move forward.
How many co-ops do we work at?
We're probably working through about, I would say, twelve to fifteen co-ops presently.
And the hundred thousand dollar thing, how often does it reset?
Year, every fiscal year, right?
Right. So, so one campus is buying twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five every month, and then.
Oh, no, we would be catching that through the transactional, the transactions, that we, we're, we're implementing some reviews to help us identify if they're trying to break up a, a, a purchase in four or three, we're, we're working through those.
Is there, that's the one that really gets me, because that happened a lot throughout the bond, with the fifty thousand dollar thing that. the bond, with the fifty thousand dollar thing, that people would do the, the change orders, that they would trigger something coming to the board. I know that's different from what you're presenting here, but I'm worried about somebody wanting to buy something for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then just paying seventy-five thousand here and then seventy-five thousand later, and splitting that purchase to avoid having to go to the board. So is there language that can be codified into policy that does not allow for that, other than the controls that you have to identify, just because it's happened so much at this district over years now?
Well, I guess we, we could, it doesn't, I don't have anything currently on there.
Is that reflected in the policy anywhere?
So if I could just interject, Trustee Saavedra, actually what the policy does, I mean, the board needs to understand that, that that's exactly what this change does. It allows the superintendent to make a single budgeted purchase onto a hundred thousand dollars, and then later, if, if the superintendent wants to make another single budgeted purchase with that same vendor, or perhaps even for that same commodity, that can happen. But what your mechanism is, that they will, they'll be reported to the board on a quarterly basis, so that the board can see that. But that was one of my concerns about this policy and making the change, and this is really a board-driven change, that it's something that y'all wanted to see. You need to be very clear about the authority that you're giving the superintendent.
Well, and I think also, yes, and, you all will get a quarterly review, but I would be expecting to see a monthly report, so that there would be or. If I'm in a situation in a workflow to approve something, the first question I'm going to ask is, you know, I, I need to see, you know, where we are with X, Y, and Z, so that I can determine whether I'm prepared to approve this or not, or whether we need to backtrack and this really needs to go to the board rather than approval from me.
Yeah, and, and the, the only reason, I, I get that's the intent, but if it's actually written, I feel like it's a stronger policy, just because that was already the intent in other policies and facilities have used it like no other. And, and so that's my big worry as we move forward, for this efficiency of the piece and the intent of the policy, if that's not there, because it's just happened so much.
So when you're talking about the intent of the policy, so let me just say some, one thing, clarify one thing. CH is different from CV local, that deals with facilities.
Right, 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 but, but it's like the same.
Right.
Of splitting in order and to not meet the threshold to, like, that's, that's what I'm focusing on.
Right.
Because it could still happen under this.
Under here, and so when you're talking about putting something in to, to say that it's the intent, I'm not sure I'm understanding what is that you would like put in.
I guess a language that could say, it's a hundred thousand dollars, but that doesn't mean that you can split a purchase to avoid going to the board, or something along those lines, to put that into.
Well, yeah, and that's going to be, that's hard to do, and, and I'll be happy to, I'll see by the time we get to the board meeting if we can craft some language to that effect. But that has always been one of the things that I've always been concerned about, and I know that I've worked with procurement over the, over the, over the years, actually, because you always have to be careful about aggregate purchases. And so one thing that forty-four point zero three one of the Texas Education Code talks about is, you are not supposed to use aggregate purchases to avoid the fifty thousand dollar threshold. So I've made that same argument with a hundred thousand dollars over the years, like, okay, just because it's up to a hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that you should be able to get around that hundred, the nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, up to a hundred thousand dollar threshold by doing successive purchases, right? And so I think we mentioned aggregate earlier, but then successive purchases. So we've been very careful about that, and I agree with you, the intent of the policy is not to circumvent that.
Right.
Right? The intent of the Texas Education Code, obviously, is not to circumvent the fifty thousand dollar threshold, and that's why the ed code says that. We can certainly look at adding some language to this. I think it's going to be hard, it may be hard to do, and we'll have to think about it and maybe it's a trial and error, kind of, with the policy together to see if we can solve the problem, the immediate problem that the, that the board has recognized. But when you make any changes to a policy, you may have unintended consequences that you do have to deal with later. And, and I, and I think Ms. Saavedra, and I think Dr. Viala, and Mr. Masekere, myself, we're all very concerned about the unintended consequences of this policy, and I think that we will be all very vigilant with how it's being used. I, I can assure you from my standpoint, when I'm going to be looking at things, I will do that, and I have, in all faith, in credit and everybody else that I just mentioned, that that's their intent too.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I have no doubt that the people in the room feel that way, but this is going to be something that's going to stay for a while, and the people in the room might change, and, and so that's where I'm coming from as well, to, obviously, I said it in very, like, layman's terms, like, do not split purchases, but I, I know you could maybe come up with language, and I understand how difficult that might be, but if you could try to do it by the next board meeting before we approve it, and there's some sort of language in the policy that, that you could craft, I would appreciate it. I think it would be important.
We can do that, and, and as I said, we can add language in there about successive purchases, and, and this is not, you know, around that.
I, I really like successive purchases.
Certainly, if you don't, that you need to buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a particular vendor, or in a single purchase, and you are specifically splitting them up to avoid bringing it to the board, we'll add language to that.
And I think that as we, just, I don't want to labor this, but I, I think it's important to note that as we're, what we're doing is, when I share that, that we've done twenty-nine RFPs, is because the reality is that we're trying to plan until communication with each department, this is your budget, this is your plan, if you have a large significant amount in one of your, your allocations, we know, I'm going to, I just saw him acknowledging, he needs to buy a large, you know, support or, or campuses with technology, whatever large purchases he might have, we realize that the best price that we're going to get is by an RFP. So our, we're being proactive in trying to reach out to this depart, the departments and saying, "Let's start this RFP," so that we don't need successive, or we don't leave it open to opportunities because of their needs at the last minute. So that's one, an additional approach that we're trying to take.
And, and to speak to, and then this will be the last comment, I mean, to speak to what, what Israel said earlier. For example, what we've talked to the departments about is, they, they, and the campuses is, in the past, this was problematic, because there was not central tech, you know, there was not a central technology purchase plan that was complete. So there, there were, you know, there were campuses that were, that, that were using their money to, to make, you know, purchases, except, you know, large purchases, you know, for technology. And so part of our system is to, for the district to be responsible for those big, large purchases, and there be a system in place for that to happen, so that it's not incumbent upon the, the, the campus to account for that. Because you can get into some of that if the campuses are having to do it, and, you know, because there, there's a workaround, but that, that's just a technology example. I would share with you, we want a system fix, not a people fix, but I will reiterate what, what Desi said. I mean, I think that you've got, you know, I understand the hypersensitivity that the board has with this particular piece, so I'm going to be very vigilant and, you know, holding, you know, people accountable, which is why we have the report structure and some of the backend controls that we need to have in place for, for me to feel comfortable with some of these approvals. But again, we might have to revisit it in three months to see, okay, is this really doing what it was intended? If not, then what other adjustments do we need to make, you know?
Yeah, and if I, a few quick comments before we try and wrap up, but, I mean, I think this is a balance of trying to, first and foremost, get our students what they need as quickly as possible, so they're not without, but certainly there's a lot of history. I personally would like to see some sort of a monthly report, instead of a quarterly report, because three months is a long time to go without, sort of, it's a long time to, to make the jump when we're used to the process as is. So I think it would just be a transparent transition to go to a monthly report as we sort of dip our toes in the water on this policy. And I, I feel like that's what this is, sort of dipping our toes in, let's see if, you know, if we can make it work, so that we still feel like we're doing our due diligence. I have one question and one comment. On the renewal, is there, I know that some policies have a provision in there where if this goes for a renewal, it has to be, or the board has to be notified. Can you kind of talk about that quickly?
Yes, so any extensions to, you're referring to bids that we issue as a district? So as policy states now, those only go to the board if there are changes in any of the terms.
So not if they're renewed?
Correct. So our standard of terminology when we issue those solicitations is that it's one-year award with the option to extend for additional one-year terms.
Okay.
So if I can just clarify that, because I think we're talking about two things. So there is one thing that's called the award, where they're putting out the award for a bid, right? Their general practice for an award is one year with four options to renew the award, and that's basically the purchasing mechanism. For instance, the RFP, the RFP will potentially be good for a total of five years, right? Contract is a different thing. Sometimes we take the award and the contract at the same time. Most of the time, you see us do that, because this is in a better position to negotiate at the time the award is being done, to, to have the contract terms. So for the contract to be renewed, there is a section, it's on page two, Trustee Hanani, and the term of the bid is options to extend a contract that would deviate from the terms of the original contract, otherwise the superintendent has the authority to extend the contract. So the board is keeping to itself the, the option to extend a contract or renew a contract, if it deviates from the original terms. Generally, we do only, a lot of times we'll just do a one-year contract, and the reason for that is, you never know what's going to be budgeted in the following year. A safeguard for us is we have the non-appropriations clause, which we have in all of our senior contracts, and just in case something is not budgeted in the following year. So we have two things there. So we have had contracts that have more than one year, and in particular, we do that if our department of purchasing has been able to lock in a better pricing for us, if we do an extended contract. In each of those situations. The majority of those contracts, you know, to be awarded for approval, most of them, if not all of them, all of them have the non-appropriations clause. Many times, it will also have additional language that we add in that says, the contract is only, any extension of the contract after the initial term is only valid if the underlying procurement remains valid and it's properly budgeted, and if it has board approval as required, and it just depends on the situation.
And that was exactly what I was referring to, and so you say most, and so my only thing was, if there's something that's not coming to us, if we could just get notified of it, we don't even need a board meeting, but it's part of a report.
Board, board update?
Regards to the contract that may be renewed.
Yes, and it, and it, we can codify the language, just to say that we're getting the report, I agree with that.
Like, be the board update.
And really, I'm trying.
Update the board on those.
Yeah, I'm trying to balance this with a transition to help us get the information that we need without us having to have those formal improvement processes. And then the only other comment that I had, just because we're talking about this, this policy, this local policy, is a lot of the large urban school districts in Texas have policies regarding small, local, minority, historically underutilized businesses. We don't, that would be something that I would love for us to address, because I think it's really important that we're trying to take advantage of our local businesses, and we make a concerted effort to the public that we want to, you know, really help contribute to our economy, and that we're specifically looking at a lot of these historically underutilized businesses.
Isn't the, the blue, doesn't the, the, I hopes, historically.
The by-board, do you mean?
The by-boards? Yeah, the by-boards.
The, the co-ops typically do track, as, as part of that, they do take that into consideration, so that they offer that up to those that are using those contracts.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of great policies out there that, that are addressing this. I, I just, I would love for us to start looking at that, you know, at a, at another policy meeting in the future. I have, you know, further comments or questions? Nobody else has any further comments or questions? We can adjourn this meeting at four o'clock PM. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back for our policy. Audit, audit committee.
And are we transitioning to the daisical audit, or can, can the audit committee proceed with?
We kind of, we sent that to the board. We both have a reference.
No, I mean, if it's easier to just do it here, that's fine. I know that we always have issues with the presentation thing.
All right, so five minutes?